Have a good meeting.
Thank you. Welcome to the Citrus School Committee meeting. I'm just gonna read the intro here. The Citrus School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. This meeting is being recorded and will be posted following the meeting. Public comment is available by Zoom and/or in-person. Committee members can email our chair or myself and granuline@zip.org, which I don't think people will do right now, but they can do later. I was gonna call this meeting to order at, oh, our clocks fixed? Our clocks are fixed, at 6:02. I guess we have to do a roll call because we have Nicole virtual. So I'll take a motion to open the meeting at 6:02. Roll call vote, Ms. Granulene.
Yes.
Ms. Benwick.
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Limlum.
Yes.
Dr. Wacowski.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Actually, can I do this? We're now on order. I've never been able to do that. I've always been remote when I was the chair. Did it late?
You were as many times as he wants.
I think I did it late. All right. So we'll open up public comments. Is there anyone in person that would have a comment to make? Is there anyone remote?
Mr. Gates, you have no virtual hands or ears.
All right, so we have no, I think a discussion of public comment. We'll move on to agenda item number three, student reports. You guys can sit right there. I'll just do a quick intro. So this year, start of a new year, and we gonna try to enhance this role a little bit rather than just being student reporters. And this year, we're gonna have a total of three students from the high school who will be participating throughout the year. With us tonight, we have Jane McSweeney. Jane Ryan. Her maiden, her mom's maiden is McSweeney. Sorry, Jane Ryan. And we have Noah Riedel. Jonah Riedel. That was a pretty big fail. Sorry. Wish I'd have over. Jane Ryan.
Yes.
Jane Ryan. And Jonah Riedel.
Yes.
Thank you for coming.
Glad to be here.
They're both seniors in Citrus High School. And again, they're two of the three who will be joining us throughout the year, providing us with updates and some other commentary as we go on. I did meet with them prior to this meeting to talk to them a little about the role and how we can enhance as much as possible. Tonight, they're just gonna give an update, and then throughout the year, hopefully they'll bring us some new and exciting things. And I've also mentioned that they are able to stay throughout the meeting if they like, but they are more than able to leave to meet other commitments. So perhaps we might make some plaques for them on the nights that they choose to stay. All right, so with that, I will open it up to Jane.
All right, hello, everyone. Welcome to having me. So this week, or last week, Citrus High School began school on Wednesday with a great opening. Freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors all met in the pack to discuss having an awesome year. We discussed our new cellphone policy, which is being put in place. During each block, your phone is now placed in a cellphone caddy on the wall, and teachers have been pretty consistent about making sure all phones are put away. Student input on this, I think, I haven't heard that many complaints, not that many people still have their phone in the hallway during lunch and during your wind block. And honestly, I think it should be good for the school. Our attendance policy, Mr. Larranger, is pretty, that's a big one of his, one of his goals is to lower our attendance, or sorry, increase our attendance rate and get rid of tardies, or mitigate tardies. And then fall sports began. We've had, I know volleyball and football, one on Friday, and the teams are off to a great start. Picture day was today for all Citrus High School students and teachers. And then expectations night will be this Thursday, September 12th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at high school.
Yeah, and then we also have five new members of our staff that we'd like to welcome this year. David Richardson in our biology department, Justin Silva for special education, Katie Lebo as a freshman guidance counselor, Ryan Donovan in our health department, and Zachary Azar for a paraprofessional. We also welcomed the class of 2028 this year, as well as 11 transfer students that have moved to Citrus and some that have returned from vocational schools. We also welcomed, again, our new counselor, Ms. Katie Lebo for our freshmen. And as, you know, she's working with exclusively our freshmen and is, works to help them through their high school career. And yeah, we're gearing up for hopefully what will be an exciting college season. You know, both me and Jane are seniors, we're applying this year. And yeah, we have an evening presentation for caregivers on the 24th of September and in-school college workshops for seniors on both the 26th and 27th of September. And yeah, you know, looking forward to a great year.
Excellent. Welcome to both of you. I'm really excited. I think, I think that you guys are gonna be great representatives to the high school and to the district in total, so appreciate it. And again, you guys are more than welcome to stay. Does anyone have any questions or comments for our newly appointed advisor? All right, yeah, you guys are more than welcome to stay. Tonight's actually a pretty quick agenda. I would guess that we would be over within the hour. Within the hour. So again, welcome. And our next meeting for you guys would be, I'm not sure the date, September 23rd? September 23rd. All right? Thank you again. All right, moving on to leadership report superintendent and his update.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen. Good evening, everyone, and happy new year. We're excited to be back at school. And I wanted to start out with a little welcome back slide deck that we put together to kind of share the opening day excitement and why being an educator is so great, because every year you have this new year, and it's my second favorite holiday besides New Year's. I guess this is the other new year that's really cool and fresh start, new beginnings for everybody. So just wanted to share some of that. Before I get too much along here, I do wanna thank Jane and Jonah for their commitment. It's a lot of time, and you're extremely busy with your senior schedules and enjoying yourself as seniors, but we love having you here and love hearing the updates, so thank you so much. So the first picture and what, you know, it's just a handful of slides. We had talked about, you know, having pride in our district and being a family. And, you know, and I think first impressions are really important. You know, when I got here five years, I think I told the story before, parents and caregivers were outside with teachers and principals landscaping the grounds. I remember running into Ms. Brandlinian, a retired family, one day, you know, drenched in sweat, he was like 95, and they were out there, you know, doing, ripping up roots and all this stuff, you know. So, you know, that was nice of them, but we wanted to make sure that we had, you know, our team and professionals come in and do that. So you'll see some of the landscaping, because it makes a big difference. And so here's cushioning what folks will welcome to, even though we know we're replacing this building, we can still make it look beautiful until that time approaches. Small photos of cushioning. I believe the PTO had the welcome back sign every year that's out there. It was over there in that first morning, and it really was festive. Your principal Craddock had some music going with a playlist that was well received by the kids and staff, dancing and happy faces. I didn't see a lot of crying, because sorry, I didn't cry in the case. The parents were very happy, so curious about that. But other than that, it looked great. The teachers were all at the whole school welcoming the kids. We'll see some of those photos as well. Really nice display there. There's a little bit more cushioning and welcoming. So here's some of the kiddos coming in, cushioning. Also, a lot of them had bags and products and things to bring into school. Now we get into Hadley again, a building that's old, older, and gonna be replaced, but certainly looks pretty nice here on the outside. So a great job by, again, our team and the volunteers that came in to help beautify that and will maintain that. So here's some snapshots of the front entrance. Here's some of the smiley faces. And I attempt to see if I can play this video, just what a tickle on loading of the bus would look like. They're very quick at this age, loading around. So you gotta maintain leverage. A little handhold there, you know, they're running to school. Did you guys run to school this year? No, as seniors, okay. As they get older, I notice they don't run as quick, or they drive quick.
Drive fast.
Yeah. So this is a really seems like a very full bus.
It was.
A lot of little people coming around. But again, just the enthusiasm and just wanna share that little slice of what we witnessed on opening day. You guys recognize some folks?
I said it's like a clown car.
Yeah, we actually have a second bus connected. Just stunt that I, you're not supposed to get away with your secrets, but. And Jenkins. And you notice this difference, a little more modern school is more hardscaped, so we did some hardscape cleaning there and then around, it looks beautiful. There's K9 Blue, a new community resource dog, Citrus Police, believing he needs to all the schools, they agree with kids, so. Now here's Wompertuck, gonna look great. Kids and the staff, the welcoming back, nice picture on the right there of workers coming in, putting the students on the bus. Here's Gates. He provided the bottom left, a little before and after photo, there's a lawnmower there. Right, well, just beady, maybe disappeared into the background as the and middle of high school. Students. And here's the high school. This year's senior class, one of the winners, we were awarded, crap me from wrong, trying Jane, but this is our narrative here, just to get school pride up and involvement in your, in your community, attending games, concerts, any kind of after-school activity, giving points in the junior class was the winner of that, so going for a repeat this year, I hope.
Yes, we are.
The new Citrus High School sign, I was talking to Dr. Wacowski for a meeting, and we talked about all the new signs that we have up. The place was kind of nondescript now, this new front entrance. Matt, I mean, come in, things are looking really nice in high school. So that's, signing also lights up in meeting, which is an extra bonus. Folks will appreciate that. So games Friday night, that was on, looked really good. This little guy on the right is turf tank, Dr. Rad, his name, and Buddy. And this is pretty interesting. Lining a field takes a long time and measuring it out with tapes, measures, and all that, and then going and painting it. So Buddy's programmed to make those, are called hash marks, hash marks on the field. So let's see if we can get a little flavor of what this thing does. So we don't want computers to take over one's job, so probably just not empty trash. We'll pick it up after game, so I think we're, we're safe there. That's a little snapshot of when we're coming back. So I just wanna welcome our staff back, our students, our families. First full week this week, and things will certainly pick up as we go along, and we've got great momentum, so thank you, everybody. Any questions?
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
May I continue with my next segment?
Of course.
Yeah, so.
Two segments, yeah.
I've got three.
Oh, three. Now three.
But I know the overrun is an hour, so I'll do it as quickly as I can. So I want, I do wanna address, now that, you know, we had a great entry and we came back, but that's not happening everywhere. As we know, the nation was shaken again by a tragic shooting at West High School in Windsor, Georgia. I wanted to acknowledge those families, and certainly those that we lost as fellow community in this country. We wanna give a shout out, deepest condolences to those families. But these are things that, on contrary to our core values, what all schools, parents, and families believe in, and it's, you know, that kids should be safe at school, that the adults should be safe at school. And so it was important of me to bring that up, but also to talk to our community tonight, and our community, obviously, about what we're doing to keep kids safe, because that's what keeps me up at night. That's my primary job as superintendent, and it's something that I think I'm very proud of here, that we take, make this a priority. And so I wanted to share a little bit about our emergency operations team. Emergency Operations Team was started a couple of years ago, and it was kind of a residual effect of just dealing with COVID, and then it transitioned right into safety. And I wanna first thank this group of people, because they ended up meeting weekly last year. Weekly, and this is a diverse group, it's a collaborative group. I think what a lot of schools miss out in is connecting with their local public service, which is fire, police, EMTs, those types of folks. We have joined them at our meetings and make decisions collectively together. If we're gonna talk about school safety and securing perimeter and evacuation drills, we need to get some fire here and see what their role is and what they expect of us. So this team consists of Mary Old, Deputy Principal Jenkins, and Ryan Mead, Principal Gates as co-chairs. And then Citrus Police Department Sergeant Mike Crowdy, SRO Nick Sherry, and SRO Marissa Stewart, Deputy Fire Chief Patrick Riley, Teacher Representative John Fitzgerald, Kelly Bell, our school nurse leader, Chris Cataldo, our, you know, Chris Cataldo of Citrus High School is as a facilities director. So a good group there. Central office will pop into now and then. Now I'm gonna talk a little bit about the work they've been doing to help keep our community safe. So last school year, they met weekly to develop a district-wide emergency operations plan, which by law we have to have. But honestly, ours wasn't great. And we talked with this group about ours being the best in the states. When you go up online on Desi, if you get time to check them out, I think you'll find that ours is, or is up there. I'll tell you why in a minute. So this is, this addresses a variety of emergency situations that anyone can encounter. So the teachers will all get copies of these, they'll be trained, and it's a good resource in user-friendly terms, so that if a substitute comes in, they can have access to it, to quickly identify situation if they find themselves in, how to rectify or deal with that. It's also helpful for administrators to be training, to talk about these things, and for our public safety officials to work with our schools and talking in the same language on how we keep everybody safe, and the protocols and practices we use. So while we've always been prepared, this is the first time that the stakeholders have come together to outline rules and responsibilities that ultimately will keep our community safe. So this plan was reviewed and approved by the Chief of Police, the Fire Chief, and myself. And this group, obviously, that put it together and took an entire year to kind of attention to detail and do this very well. So now that we've got it done, each year, what we'll do is, is to assess it and see if there needs to be any revisions, updates, changes in laws, changes in safety practices, those types of things. So it'll be more of an upkeep and then continued training. So to let the community know our commitment and dedication to safety, we have, we train all of our staff before the kids are even here. So we commit those first two days in staff here to have organized, well-planned training with the Citrus Police and the fire, with fire drills in the first few days. We practice shelter in place and we practice lockdowns. And just a quick primer on that, shelter in place is when a situation in a school where someone requires privacy. So the doors stay shut, you stay in your rooms, teaching goes on as normal. This might be a medical incident or something like that, where we need access to hallways, things like that. So not a high level, but certainly something where we need the halls cleared and things like that. The lockdown is, is more intense, intensified. This could be a threat on the inside of the building, on the outside of the building. Include, include obviously an active shooting situation. This is where the teachers are trained to run a variety of situations. Something that could end up benign, or talk about a stranger in the building, checking, asking them for the pass, things like that, recording that, that could result in a lockdown until we find that individual. So those things happen the first two days, then the, in this case, the police make themselves available to go around class to class to, you know, answer any teacher's individual questions. So I will get, talk, we will talk about it as a group, and then I'll go on my classroom, and I might have a unique class setup, or I'm concerned about the windows over here, and so if the police come around, I might be able to ask them about my specific class, my specific concerns, needs, worries, and questions. And so that's a great thing. And again, when they meet regularly, new questions that may come up, surface, we get them resolved. So that's a great resource to have. And during the year, there will be, these lockdown drills will happen with children as well. We've been doing that for a few years now. Communication will go out to families so that they know. And this year, new, we're shooting for the spring to get this organized, as well as to have a community forum. It's important that we have a community conversation about safety. It's a partnership with home and school. And so that's the goal, to have a forum where we invite everybody together to have these conversations about what's important to us proactively, what we're doing to educate folks that, a little bit what I'm talking about tonight, but more in detail from the professionals that are on this committee, could also answer questions and go from there. So that's it. And finally, to keep myself sharp, I participated in a school safety and crisis communication event this week. It was with 130 other superintendents from the nation and featuring Rick Kaufman, K-A-U-F-M-A-N. He's kind of the guru, national respected consultant on crisis management. In fact, he's said to be the author of the original crisis manual that's evolved over time. He reacted to the Columbine incident and helped take that over and ran the communications there after the, after the fact. So, you know, very fascinating and interesting to listen to him, his experiences with it and advice, and he shared some resources with me that I can share with our staff. So that was very beneficial for me to continue to keep sharp on these situations. So I wanted to pause there and just, again, end with some reassurance to our community that we prepare this, I would say, year round, in my mind, 365 days, but it's something we, we really work hard on in the summer, preparing for school, and then as the year goes by, it's just sharpen the saw and make sure that our staff and students are well-trained and that they're prepared as best they can and that they feel safe. And so that's the goal. And looking forward to, usually that emergency operation team comes and presents it sometime during the year, it's that important, and then the community forum in the spring. That's my second one, I'll pause for any questions.
Any question on the committee?
Thank you very much for that. I think that you, as, as you expressed, safety is your number one priority, it's ours, ours as well, so appreciate you giving those. I know you had updated us prior a couple of weeks ago too as well, so appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for the committee support, obviously. You, this is the highest priority to you too, so thank you. Last thing I wanted to do was, you know, this year, I wanna talk more specifically and purposely about our strategic plan and really talk about when we are doing things that align with that. Something came up last week at boston.com report on school rankings came out, and people aren't familiar with this, it's basically using a multitude of data and information from each schools across the state, goes into this formula, and then it comes out with a ranking. Many newspapers do this, so there'll be a lot of these coming out. This was the first one. So I wanted, you know, I think there was some concerns brought up in the community, and I know when I first got here five years ago, it was brought up. It's something people pay attention to, I wanted to, so I wanted to directly address it with our community, that we look at all, we look at those rankings, we don't always agree with the necessary, but we take out the important data that we need to use and to improve. So for example, the data used in this boston.com ratings was for 2023, so about a year and a half ago. It was not last year's data, it was the year before MCAS scores, the SAT, all that kind of stuff. So that being said, we were not surprised, we knew this, and we made our goals last year accordingly to this data. So I wanted to make sure the community knew that, and we're already in year two of working on our, our goals, our strategic plan aligned with improving our school in all these areas. So I wanted to make that very clear. I also wanted to share that the gold standard really for this is two things, and it's the strategic plan that we spent six months on as a community, asking the question in 22, 23, in the winter and spring of 22 and 23, what is excellence? We had many conversations around this table my first two years on that word was being used, I used it a lot. I said, I want excellent. And then we asked, well, I think Dr. Wacowski asked me one time, what is it? I said, oh, we all have to decide that. And we did, and that's the strategic plan document. Now, how do we measure success? Well, we measure success by the outcomes that we all came up with in that document. Why do I say all? Because we had multiple public forums where the community was invited, all of us. We had a survey that everyone was able to participate in, and we had 22 people representative of the entire community that sat for many nights, leading students, working diligently to come up with this. I'm very proud of it. I had a superintendent reach out today that wanted to use it, and so grabbed it off the website, wanted to use some of the ideas, and so we're very proud of it. It's a, it's a five-year plan, so there's a lot of stuff in there. So our goal this year is to have that reflected in the district goals that I'll be sharing in October, so if folks can come and pay attention to that. And finally, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education does a good job of tracking all this data and comparing school to school. So if you want the gold standard, that's it. It's called a percentile accountability percentile ranking. It takes all the important data, your attendance, I'm talking about high school for right now, your attendance, your graduation rates, your academic rigor, if you will, or advanced course group that you have, and your MCAS growth and achievement. So all that information is taken, it has a formula, then it compares like schools, and it gives you a ranking. So I would encourage people to look at that. That's what we're using, and that's probably the best indicator of how well schools are doing and how they're improving, and we'll continue to refer to that. So that's why I wanted to talk a little bit about that tonight, not maybe just end with one example. So for example, using that 23 data that was in that boston.com report, past year's goals were focusing, if folks remember, on the high school as the flagship school. We did a lot of work with our English department, so we'll be looking at the English scores this year, obviously, and hoping, hoping, but expecting that they do well or better, because we put a lot of work into that. We talked about exile benchmarking, we implemented that. We started a little bit with the math, but that's gonna really be this year's high focus while keeping the ELA going. So I want folks to know that. So you'll see what we're gonna do a little bit differently this year is tonight, we typically have an AP report out. What we're gonna do is make one, one bigger night where we have the department chairs, principals, myself, Mr. Lynch, Dr. Rad here, and we're gonna report out on a lot of this accountability and habit and information that folks can understand and can talk more about this and how do we measure up. The school committee directed it to me last year, I think, with three things, you know, how, where are strengths, where's going well? Where are areas we need to improve or work on, growth areas, if you will? And finally, you know, what do we enjoy doing, what's going great? Where are some cool things? We're gonna focus on those three areas, being very transparent. And then the second part of, you know, answering this kind of ranking system is our district goals that I will present as superintendent goals, which will be in October. And I wanna thank the school committee for challenging me on these goals, but also for giving me kind of a roadmap on specifically what they're looking for. And it's a two-year plan, so I'm willing to work with our team on developing those. I'm really excited about them, and I think they're gonna like them. And so we're looking forward to that. So I invite folks to come back for those two meetings in October. I think we'll get a lot more information on where we stand, what we need to do to improve, and what we're gonna do to do to improve. That was last, I think I, what we actually have planned to accomplish that. I think that's it for me.
That's good. Great, thank you very much. I'll open up to the committee for any questions. None?
Well, I don't, it's not really a question, but I just wanted to kind of, on the topic of the rankings, I think it's a I think it's also helpful sometimes to think about or to realize that the rankings measure things in a very narrow way. And they might preference things that run counter to goals that we've set internally, for example. I know that we've had a goal of increasing access to AP classes. We think that's really important. There's a lot of research that shows that that's meaningful for kids to not be shut out of AP. You know, early on in high school, we want to actually say, no, you could, you could do this. But I know what that sometimes translates into is that therefore we have more kids taking the test. Therefore, our score averages might be a little bit lower, whereas in some districts, they have a tight cutoff. You have to do this in order to take this class. And then their scores are artificially, not artificially, but the average is higher. And so I think sometimes when we think about the rankings, that's also something really important to take into consideration. Sometimes what they're measuring just runs counter to values and decisions that we purposely made that we think are the right ones. And so it's going to be really hard for us sometimes to be put up against schools that have made different decisions that are more aligned with, you know, the way the rankings are calculated.
Yeah. Thank you for that example. And I agree. And there's other examples, obviously, in college. Some towns want every single kid to go to college. I think here it's more like we want every kid to go where their best student to go. And not every kid may be suited to go to college. They may want to go into the workforce, they may want to go into the military. So that's the, our mission statement to, to help support, challenge, and inspire our kids to reach their unique potential. I think that's what separates us. And when we did the mission, I mean, the strategic plan, a lot of that talk was about making this very unique to situate. So that's what I love about it. That's what I love about our community. And so, you know, I appreciate you bringing that up. A lot of that is philosophy driven in how our community reacts to what's best for them.
Anyone else? Ms. Branelini?
Me. Um, thank you, Mr. Gates. Just wanted to sort of agree with Ms. Fenwick on what she just said and Superintendent Burkhead too. I love, I love the presentation model of having that be sort of like a bigger picture for folks to understand. And I'm kind of wondering if there's a, what way, I'd love for parents and caregivers and everyone to sort of understand more about, you know, kind of spread more information about exactly what's being discussed now, sort of why these are our values, tie back to strategic plan. I just think when we see these things out, you know, especially links on social media to these types of reports, it's easy to kind of have a reaction to it, but to, if we have more information out there to provide kind of a solid understanding of, of the whys and situate. And the unique piece is really important too, I think, for our district. Then, you know, I think that could go a long way. So maybe it has to do with just trying to even just drive up some attendance or spreading the recording of our meetings so that we can get that out there more in the community just to, you know, there's a lot of education to be had in that area. I, for one, have learned quite a bit over the years and continue to as things change and evolve. So I think the more info we can spread in that, that communications piece is really vital.
Thank you. I agree with both of us.
Anyone else? No. I just have, I agree with Ms. Fenwick's comments as well. I think that, I think that we have made a directed change to prioritize certain things. And those, unfortunately, in that particular survey, were, are not being measured. So I can appreciate that. I do have one question though. As I looked at the data, the one number that I was surprised with was the graduation rate. It was like 95%. Is that an accurate number?
No, and again, that's, it's a little misleading because that's a four-year cohort. It's not freshman year. So it's not just last year's class and that's 95%. It's a four-year, you start as a freshman year and it's the kids that end there. Whether they move, go to a different school, not necessarily a drop-off. So we're, that's a little unique. So for example, last year in our DSC report, the highest number you can get on any indicator is four. Maybe we got a four, three and a four on graduation rates. The other part of that is the five-year graduation rates. Ultimately, it's important that kids graduate. So I think we do also a good job of the ones that don't graduate with their class, that we follow through and make sure that they graduate. So our fifth, five-year graduation rate is almost 9%. Last year, I will say that the graduation rate for a single year, for example, was 100%. First time since I've been here. Every single kid graduated. There was one that was right up until, it might have been one after the graduation day for the rest of the class, that student did end up graduating, get the work done, finish it. So if we can string along three or four of those, the goal is 100%. We're, yeah, we're up close to probably 90. I'm misleading on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to Dr. Rapp.
Thank you, Mr. Gates, a member of the committee. I have three things on my agenda this evening. The first is the financial forecast. Believe it or not, we're starting to prepare for FY '26, '25, '26 school year. We just began '24, '25, but we immediately start talking about '25, '26. What's great in Situate is that there's already a mechanism in place for communication among the three boards. So the school committee represented by Ms. Fenwick and Mr. Gates, we met with financial forecasts with representatives of the select board, as well as the advisory board and town and school administration last Thursday, September 5th, to just start talking about the priorities. What's on people's minds. It's way too early to start talking about numbers. But we just wanted to know what's up among the three boards. What are the pressure points that the boards are dealing with? For the school committee, it's pretty clear. We'll be negotiating with all six of our unions this year. So that'll be the piece of volatility in our budget planning that we didn't have last year. But this year we'll be working within those structures. So it's an exciting time and it's fantastic in Situate. We are going to meet again in October to continue the conversations. And I think it's great. It's a wonderful opportunity for all of us to stay in touch, know what's going on. We can not only bounce ideas one off, off one another, but we can help each town board understand each other's priorities. And that makes it a whole lot easier and a whole lot more transparent when we actually put together the budget in a couple of months. So a quick update, members who are there, I want to certainly add a few things. Feel free.
I think you covered it pretty well. But it is, I would say that this committee, the financial forecast, is very well organized since that we've already met. But only what the fiscal year started, started July 1st and it's only, it was only August when we first met. So that's pretty early on. So it gives us, you know, enough time to begin these discussions. So that's, that's great. I think the next one is in four, roughly four weeks, I think, something like that.
So thank you. So and then I wanted to give the committee a heads up on some of the capital planning that's came up at the last meeting. And I had committed to share what we were thinking about for capital planning. So if you just give me a moment to share a memo that is in your, in your books. And if I can find it here, I'm going to share it. I'm not good at talking and sharing at the same time. I apologize. So on Thursday, I need to submit to the town our capital plan for the next five years. And that's a little small. I apologize. And one of the things, as we put together the capital plan, we're very mindful of the fact that the biggest part of our capital plan is what's not on here, which is the Cushing Hathley School project. And so we're very aware of the generosity of the town in order to put that project together. And it's going to become the focus of, of our work for the next three years. And so we have certainly, we maintain life safety at Cushing and Hathley. And as you know, last year, as things come up at both schools, if it was a plumbing related issue or a life safety issue, we certainly took care of it. But our long-term focus is on Wompituck Jenkins and here at the high school. And so you'll see right at the beginning, the four projects that were approved at town meeting in April are all well underway. As I mentioned at our last meeting, the boys locker room will be done in the spring. The Wompituck bathrooms are ADA compliant. We've already begun that. It is out right now. The science labs are pretty much finished and the technology switches are installed. So we worked really hard to get a lot of those underway. And then we really wanted to keep this list very tight. I heard capital planning loud and clear. I said it at the last meeting. You know, we need to take care of our own problems. And so the smaller things we're doing, you've saw a lot of the improvements on the slideshow two weeks ago. So for the next couple of years, the things that really need to get done are interior painting at Wompituck in the old building, as well as the Jenkins windows. So we did the roof last summer. The next step toward keeping Jenkins going is to replace the windows. And then the following year, really looking at the high school gym. It needs a new floor. We've known that. But if you've been in the bleachers, if we're going to replace the floor, we're going to replace the bleachers as far as I'm concerned. So it's really looking at a renovation of the gym. Some smaller things we've been able to do this year with basketball hoops and making sure that we're putting padding on the gym. We can do that this year. We don't have to make that part of a capital planning. But we're going to make the basketball hoops electric and different things like that to try to dress up the gym. But the big money is on a new floor and new bleachers, which we're hoping to do in a couple of years. And then I'm throwing down the gauntlet and putting it on the list, high school air conditioning, second floor. Sorry, guys, it'll be gone by the time that happens.
It's, we know it's next.
Thank you. So that's a real number, 1.4 million. We did get a quote for it. So second floor, if we can, if we can manage it in 2028. And then the small gym, the floor is just as bad as the large gym. It's just prohibitive to do both at the same time. And then over time, looking way down the road at Jenkins floors, again, maintaining Jenkins, that building was only built in 2000. It's only 24 years old. And then ultimately looking at a Wompituck roof. And whether that's a full replacement or repair remains to be seen. The issues don't seem to be so bad right now with Wompituck. We're not seeing a whole lot of leaks. But I'm just putting it on there as kind of a placeholder for, for 2030. So it's a, it's a short list, but it really focuses on the buildings that we're going to be keeping long-term in the district. So I'm happy to listen to any reaction to that. And this doesn't require a vote this evening because we do want to be able to, you know, depending on the funding and so forth, if we can move things around, we want to. This is what I'll be submitting on Thursday to the town.
Great. Thank you. I know that, I think I had asked for it last. I appreciate, I appreciate it. This puts it in perspective and so we can kind of see what's going on. Any questions on these items? I just have a question that the timing is, those first parts of 2025, have those, those have not been approved yet. Those are going to capital to hopefully be approved, correct?
No, they have been approved.
Those have been approved. Okay.
So it's a 24, 25 year.
So the 26 is the Wompituck interior and the Jenkins windows are the next ones to be voted on.
Correct.
Okay.
Hope it will be to do those next summer.
Okay, great. Excellent. So we've
I just have a comment there, Mr. Gates, just that
Yes.
Happy to see that, that boys locker room, just, it just, since I've been on school committee, has been on this list. And it's just really nice to see that project be completed. I think it, what's been done so far is really nice and the students love it. And it's a really nice, both spaces, the girls and boys locker rooms are awesome. And they're so, they're just used so much and it's made such a difference for everyone there. So it's nice to see that finally happening to completion because of, you know, and I know obviously COVID, it's interesting because it's just been on the list for a really long time. So it's nice to wrap that up. So appreciate that moving forward.
Thank you.
Dr. Rowe, I'm curious, having sat on capital planning and know the discussions that happen there. What's your decision point for, you know, because the, the capital planning is always talking about maintenance. Maintenance is not our responsibility. So, you know, we are trying to be good stewards of the buildings and using our own budget. So what's the decision point for when it sits in our budget and then when you decide to go to the town, other than being, you know, 1.4 million dollars for air conditioning? Curious.
Sure. So it's, it's speed and affordability and the crisis level.
Okay.
I think all three. So, you know, speed in terms of how fast can we get it done? Is it a crisis? It's something that can, many of these things are three or four years out, you know, pen and weight. And then really it comes down to affordability. In my own mind, you know, 40, $50,000 is often something we can manage. When it gets much beyond that, then it's difficult to do within a budget.
Yeah. I, I know, I'm assuming you, you have the list because you talked to it, but I'm wondering, you know, when you go to capital planning, it would be good to have in your back pocket the examples of things where we are picking up the tab so you can say, this is how, right? Just to make this a more compelling list.
Absolutely. No question.
Yeah.
Just a clarification. You said the boys locker room will be done in the spring. It'll be started in the spring?
It'll be started in February.
Oh, okay.
So we're writing how we're spending it. Yeah, it should be finished by the early summer, July at the latest.
And the estimate, the bid that you got for the air conditioning, is that $20, $28?
It's current. So we're going to be looking at that closely. That only came in last week. They did escalate it a little bit because they know that it's two or three years out, but it's very, very preliminary.
Thanks.
Right. No, so just to put it in context, so we're asking capital and the town to approve those two projects, which is like roughly one, just over a million dollars. Okay.
So the rationale being that really the school project
Yeah, school, okay. Okay. No, it's helpful. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think it sounds like capital is on a tight schedule or on a much better schedule now too, starting earlier in the process. So it gets everyone working together.
Absolutely. If we start in November, I think we need some.
Yeah, great. All right. Thank you very much. And then we just have the service master donation.
Thank you. This is an annual donation through the generosity of Service Master. They donated $1,250 to the schools to use for school supplies throughout the district. And so I would ask the school committee to approve that donation for that purpose at the discretion of the principals and I'll work with them.
Excellent. Now a motion.
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the Service Master donation of $1,250 with great appreciation.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Limbaugh, second by Dr. Rakowski. We need to take a vote. Roll call vote, Ms. Branelini.
Yes.
Ms. Fenwick?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ms. Limbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Rakowski?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much, the Service Master. Next up, our approval of minutes for August 26. Motion, please.
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the August 26, 2024 minutes as presented.
Motion by Ms. Limbaugh to the second?
Second.
Second, Dr. Rakowski. Roll call vote. Let's do it the same way. Ms. Branelini?
Yes.
Ms. Fenwick?
Yes.
Yes. I don't know how to do myself. Yes, I'm a yes. Ms. Limbaugh?
Yes.
Dr. Rakowski?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Any warrants?
Yes, I have two, which will catch, catch us up from the summer.
Excellent.
From August 8th, 2024 for $251,630 and 11 cents. And that is primarily a work that we do over the summer. It also included much of the boys locker room design work that was done as well. And then for September 5th, 2024, for $316,945 and 79 cents. And again, that was the beginning of school supplies. And in tonight's warrant, you'll also see the new math curriculum being paid for. So that's very exciting.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Any correspondence? Really good. Any other business? Ms. Fenwick?
I have another business item.
Okay. Ms. Branelini?
Just wanted to mention our school committee goals and thank Dr. Rakowski for organizing that template for us and see if anyone was interested or able to take the task on of developing that further into more, you know, sort of action oriented goals for our committee.
I'm happy to work on it. I mean, I told you I would, so.
Yes.
Excellent.
I can help, Carrie, if you would be helpful.
Sure. Yeah. It's just taking that, what we did in the retreat and I, Ryan graciously shared the
Template.
Template that they're using so that we can make sure our goals align with what's going on in the district. So I just put that as the bottom part of it. And then we just need sentences really.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you.
Um, I was going to ask about, so we had talked about at our retreat, checking in with the various committees that we are supposedly either on or liaisons to, to double check on kind of like what is our expected role? And I was curious about that because I think I'm capital planning. So then there's talk of meetings and I'm like, wait, I don't know about these meetings. So
I can comment a little bit. So I took on the role of reaching out to those, those groups and I have not.
Okay.
But it's kind of two steps. One step is generally, I don't know, somehow, once we vote on the new subcommittees and liaisons, an email goes to town hall. I don't think that they receive that. So they don't even know who the new reps are. I'm not sure. Are you, are you getting old emails from Capital Plan?
No. Because I told them
That you were on.
That you had to tell them.
Yeah, I had to tell them. And I also had to tell somebody else about where you know.
Okay, so I will, I will take
Oh, Sick Bank, when you joined Sick Bank, I told them too.
Okay, so, um, yeah, I, I will follow up with the town hall and the reps. town hall and the reps. But I think the first step is getting the right people on the distribution list. That's the first thing. And then I have an email ready to go, but I kind of wanted it to come from me, from the school committee. And I was having a hard time figuring out how to do that. I got to get all of the shared persons emails. I just haven't done that yet.
Okay. Select board might have all this.
And in the meantime?
Yeah, I think they do. I just, yeah.
In the meantime, should I attend? Yes.
Absolutely.
Can you tell me what?
Absolutely. They, they haven't sent any formal communications out yet.
Okay.
Uh, sorry to interrupt, but they, I took the date from the select board list that was published in May. So they've published all the dates for everything.
It's usually early.
Novemberish usually.
November. Okay.
Yeah, could be.
Yep.
They should check.
Yeah. The first step is for us to get on the distribution list and I'll, I'll
Thank you.
I'm not sure who it is. It used to be, I think, Lorraine, but she's not there, but I think, I'll, I'll figure that out.
Okay, thank you.
And Maria, since capital planning is more of a timely one, I can reach out to Chris Karsha and just make sure that you're moved in just as an aside to some of the other liaison positions, just so at least, because we know that one is you know, happening so much in the fall too. So that's, that one we can kind of do on the side.
Thank you.
Chris is, I believe, still the chair.
Yeah, still.
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, me too. Yeah.
Yeah.
On it.
All right. Anything else? Welcome back to school, everybody. Our student reps, thank you for staying. Hopefully that was exciting. This could be the second shortest meeting ever. So I appreciate you sticking around anyways to get a taste of what it's all about. I look forward to hearing from you guys in the future, two weeks.
Yeah, and we look forward to being here.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you.
And hopefully you'll also meet our third member.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. If nothing else, I would take a motion to adjourn at six fifty-three.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lindblom, second.
I'll second.
Ms. Fenwick, roll call vote. Ms. Brandalini?
Yes.
Ms. Fenwick?
Yes.
Gates, yes. Ms. Lindblom?
Yes.
Dr. Rakowski?
Yes.